Thanks, it went well for you, Sarah?
Yeah, they are.
Ken says he talked to you.
Oh, a little, yeah.
Okay. I told him be nice to you because I had to. You know, and.
He did a wordy.
No, Ken doesn't. Ken does not. No. I've been there eleven and a half years and I don't. Where'd he work?
It's time. Seven o'clock, let's call me in order, roll call.
Barlow.
Here.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brim.
Here.
Jarvis.
Here.
McLean.
Here.
Nesbit.
Here.
Resegui.
Here.
Stenselbart.
Here.
Tassiba.
Present. Please rise for the pledge of the flag. The pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda? Do I, do we have any additions or corrections? Any kind of discussion at all?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Jarvis to approve the agenda as presented. All in fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same. Also in your packet, you have the approval. You have the minutes of the August 12th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Any corrections? Comments? Are you a motion to approve?
I make the motion, we approve it as written and placed on file.
Second it.
Okay, motion by Jarvis, supported by Barlow to approve the minutes of the August 12th, 2024, regular meeting. Uh, roll call.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Resegui.
Yes.
Stenselbart.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassiba.
Yes. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. Public hearing is regarding establishment of a commercial rehab district for 328 and 420 East Mill Street, Hastings, Michigan, 49058 pursuant to Public Act 210 of Public Acts 2005. Dan, you want to give us a little history on this?
Yes, thank you. Yes, the property across the street, which is the former Royal Coach site, there's two parcels to that property, 328 East Mill and 420 East Mill. The public hearing tonight is for the sole purpose of city council, city council to review and consider establishing a commercial rehabilitation district. The, the reason for that is if the property or the developer in control of the property would like to submit a commercial rehabilitation abatement certificate application to, to the city, the district is required to be established prior to that extent. So, tonight is the public hearing to establish the district. Currently, we have two similar districts in the city. One was developed for the loss at 128. The other was for the former Kmart Center, when the new center owners rehabbed the Kmart section into what became TJ Maxx, B2 Outlets, and Family Farm and Home. So, we have two similar ones. But this is, this would be a third one, and it's truly a commercial rehabilitation district.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any, any questions to Dan on this before I open up the public hearing? Okay, open the public hearing. Anybody here to address this issue tonight?
Hi, Jared Belka with Warner Norcross, working with the developer on this project. Think you guys have had some background, just give you a brief overview, and we're happy to answer any questions, but appreciate your consideration of this request. The project is a construction of a proposed mixed-use development. They have a commercial building that would be more like a kind of commercial kitchen, kind of in concert with the community foundation. The remaining buildings, three, new construction, three-story buildings, for a total of about 135 apartments that will be available for rent. Obviously, in this current world with construction costs, the way they're at, interest rates where they're at, you know, the developer is seeking to utilize this tool to, to help get the project financed. So, as Dan said, tonight's request is to support establishment of the district. We would then submit an application and be back before you. We've also been working with, with Dan on a brownfield plan. I think as you all know, that there have been prior developments proposed for this site that just haven't been able to get off the ground. So, you know, we're asking for your support. It will also help support leveraging additional state support, which we've applied for as well through the MEDC. So, we're happy to answer any questions, appreciate that consideration in this exciting project. One, the team's been working on for quite some time, and we're excited on the, be before you and present this. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the public want to comment? Yeah, closed public hearing. Counselor, do you have any questions of the gentleman just spoke?
I do. What is a commercial kitchen? I saw it attack, yeah, I saw it, I saw it attack.
Hi, good evening. My name's Greg Taylor with Copper Rock Construction. We're the developers and builders on this particular project. The commercial kitchen, to answer your question, Mr. Councilman, is a portion of the building that, that Mr. Belka referenced that we'll be building along the river, which will be leased by the community foundation. The community foundation has a variety of different users that are going to be putting in that building. That includes a demonstration kitchen, you know, current design of the building, and farmer's market, and multiple other food-related uses that service the community. And so, there will not be a restaurant. It's a demonstration kitchen and a, a restaurant, or a commercial kitchen that could be used for startup incubator-type businesses to learn how to open their own restaurant or produce their own food products. So, that, that would be my best definition of what the commercial kitchen component is of that particular building.
Mr. Stenselbart is a new council member, so he hasn't been involved in any information for this project. Maybe, I know he said there's going to be five buildings, you said, or four?
Three residential buildings.
Yeah. But explain kind of what's going to happen over there.
Okay, I'll, the site, not to overcomplicate things, but it is a complicated site because it has a consumer's energy easement running through the middle of it, has a creek running through the eastern portion of the site, wetlands at the far east portion of the site. And so, what we've done is we've confirmed the floodway, the flood plain, the wetlands, all of that's been fully approved by FEMA and Eagle. So, we know what we can build on the site, and what we're proposing is, and the site plan has been approved, is for a 15,000 square foot commercial building, which is the one I just referenced, that the community foundation would be involved in occupying. And that would sit at the southeastern portion of the site, close to the river, at a high water mark where we can build. And then, further west on the site, we'll be building three, three-story apartment buildings, all of which are L-shaped, based on the topography and, and the wetlands of the site. And that's where we'll have these 135 market rate apartments.
All right. One, I care a lot about that river because I take care of it. I work for that company right there. I don't have to walk that river every day. So, take good care of it. Is there enough parking? I mean, three stories. I, I picture my mind's eye, and I'm sure the experts have looked at it. There's parking for that many people?
Yeah, we, we, we do have adequate parking that meets or exceeds the, the requirements of the site plan approval. And there's also going to be a separate parking lot up near Mill Street at the far northeast corner of the site, which is going to be mostly used by the commercial building, even though it's further down, down the hill.
And Mill Street handles that much traffic? Can handle that much traffic? Did you just say mind your own business?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said, we'll see about it.
Oh, I didn't know if that had anything to do with you. Just, I'm sorry, go on.
Well, in terms of, in terms of the traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, this has been fully vetted through the city, and, and, and those questions have been asked and, and answered relative to what we're planning. There are, there are no, there's no widening of the street planned, anything like that, no third lanes being put in. You know, again, this is mostly a residential use, you know, coming off of the existing infrastructure.
When do you envision getting the first shovel in the ground?
As soon as we can this fall. You know, we've, we've been delayed mostly because of the multiple approvals we've had to go through, and, you know, we have our lending in place, and we have our.
I'm very familiar with the property.
We're just finalizing our approvals with the state of Michigan, going through the last few steps here with the city. But we're ready to roll as soon as those pieces are in place.
Does it normally take this long to start a project like that?
I wish I could say definitively no, that it doesn't take this long, but I have had the experience it does take this much time or longer. Again, this is a very complicated site with very complicated subsurface soil conditions that we have to work through. And then, we've had a surprise or two along the way relative to the flood plain, which required both state and federal approvals, which took some time. So, we're disappointed it has taken this long, but it's certainly a project that we're devoted to, and we're looking forward to breaking ground as soon as we can.
You got a question, Al?
Yeah, your commercial kitchen, I have to ask, it sounds like, is that Blue Zones involved in that? That sounds like what they were wanting to do in the community.
I believe so. Unfortunately, Bonnie with the foundation can't make it tonight, but. Annie Halli, if you could answer that.
If you want, I can answer questions regarding the commercial kitchen.
So, Blue Zones for the foundation?
Go back there.
Yeah.
Any other questions, those gentlemen? You want to go up and just explain the food hub? That's what they're calling it, right?
Yeah, I'm Annie Halli, and I'm with the community foundation as their chief operating officer. We are, we've been working with Copper Rock for, and you must have the patience of a saint, for a very long time. Our community foundation, our board, we are so excited and 100% behind this project. We've made concessions, I know the city's made concessions, to make sure that this comes to fruition. As far as the community kitchen is concerned, Blue Zones isn't necessarily, we are, we are not necessarily partnering with them, but they are involved in, in that process. Obviously, healthy food access is a major initiative for Blue Zones, as well as exercise and all of that. But, but how involved they will be with the food hub, I, I'm, I'm not sure. They're a separate entity than, than us, so.
So, who, who owns the food hub? The foundation?
No, Copper Rock will own it.
They'll own it.
And we, we will be, we'll be the primary renters, and then getting other.
You're renting, you're selling them the property, and then you're going to be renting the kitchen?
We will be renting the building and then finding other tenants to, to be part of that community, a hub.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
This will be coming up further in, we've already closed the public hearing, so this will all be coming up further in your agenda, so, thanks. Public comment. At this time, anybody in the public would like to get up and speak? I'll give you three minutes, and let me know who you are and you're a resident. Anybody? Okay.
On this, excuse me, on this subject, just on that subject?
You can get up and talk about anything you want, but I'm only going to give you three minutes, so state your name, tell me where you live, and you can get up and phone me and speak.
My name is Joseph Peterman. I live 323 State Street. I have one question for the city. Seems like I'm the only one. There's hundreds of houses here in Hastings. Driveways that are shared. How does one go about asking the city about their shared driveway that after 108 years, my house has had a driveway that has this much of property of the other person? How does the city rectify that problem when the neighbors are assaulting, intimidating, harassing you over that driveway, which they, they own so much of the driveway? What does the city do about this? I went to every agency that I could today, even my homeowner's insurance. Nobody in this town has a piece of paper to go to court to remedy this situation. Nobody has an explanation where to go, who to see, people to talk to about this.
Y'all done?
No answers though, huh?
This is, this is not a question answering session part of our meeting.
Okay, I didn't know, otherwise I wouldn't have came today.
This is just comment.
Okay.
I'll guarantee you that staff will, will, you know, you get back to them maybe tomorrow, maybe they can talk to you. I have.
What, what staff?
Well.
See, that's what I've been trying to ask today.
This is question, this is not a question answering session, this is a comment. You make your comment to me, and I'll forward it to the staff.
Gotcha.
Okay.
That was my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, no, thank you.
Going, okay. Okay. Formal recognition and presentations. Dave Hatfield's not here tonight, hopefully next council meeting he'll be here. Item nine, items of action by unanimous consent. Received, placed on file four invoices totaling $693,493.88 as detailed in your attachment. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve those four invoices totaling $693,493.88.
I will second what she said. Okay, motion by McLean, second by Stenselbart, received, placed on file four invoice totaling Kaderberg, Berhag, 419, 260, 30, Ace Asphalt, 178, 35. Moore, Brujink, I like to say Moore, Brujink. $25,658.23, Cotant's Farm Market, $28,540, for a total of $643.43, $643,493.88. The motion made by McLean, supported by Stenselbart to approve. Roll call.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Resegui.
Yes.
Stenselbart.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Tassiba.
Yes. Okay, item, item 10A, consider approval of negotiated contract for cemetery and memorial construction with Kaderberg, Berhag for $104,421. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Barlow, supported by McLean, to approve the negotiated contract for cemetery and memorial construction with Kaderberg, Berhag for $104,421. Questions?
What is this included out there? Is this, is this the people that are going to be taking care of the cemetery? Or is this?
What, what this is, is a memorial space up on top of the hill, and this is, we've, we've approved the, the bid to this company, but it was over budget. So, Travis negotiated with Kaderberg to lower the price, and they lowered the price. We're, the, the city is going to be supplying some of the labor, but it'll be, it'll be a, a space up on top of the hill up there, a memorial space to immortalize people that maybe weren't buried there, but they had some major contribution to the city. So, it's going to be, it's going to be some cement work, it'll be some benches up there, there'll be walls to put plaques on for these people, that's what it's all, that's pretty much what it is, huh? See? Okay? Anybody else? Roll call.
I'm sorry. You said it was over budget, but now it's under 1159 under? The negotiated contract prices, 1159 under?
Yes.
Yeah, the, what we have in the budget now is 105, 105,580. And now, I've negotiated to 104, 421.
All right, I got you, I see, I see, I got you where they're going, okay? I knew here, that's why.
That's the reason? Anyhow.
Feel good about that comment, do you?
Okay, any further comments? Roll call.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Resegui.
Yes.
Stenselbart.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brim.
Yeah.
Tassiba.
Yes. Okay, entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-24 establishing a, a commercial rehab district for properties located at 328 East Mill Street. Must be, what is that, property number 55001, 001, 02, and 420 East Mill Street, property number 55001, 01, 001, 04.
I'll make the motion, oh, support.
Motion by Nesbit, supported by McLean. Any questions? Roll call.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Resegui.
Yes.
Stenselbart.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
No.
Tassiba.
Yes.
Consider authorization of City of Hastings Traffic Control Order Number 221. Do I hear a motion to approve? Authorize?
I'll make that motion. Support.
Motion by Resegui or by Nesbit to authorize the City of Hastings Traffic Control Order Number 221. Any questions?
Did they already put this there?
Yes.
June 20th, the signs were put up.
Okay. Jackie's good.
You got a question? Roll call.
Nesbit.
Me too.
Yes.
Resegui.
Yes.
Stenselbart.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes, thank you.
McLean.
Yes.
Tassiba.
Yes.
Item D, entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a new 2024 Ford F-250 pickup truck from Longhammer Ford of Owasso in the amount of $55,291.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Support.
Motion by Barlow, supported by Nesbit, to approve the purchase of a new 2024 Ford F-250 pickup truck from Longhammer, Longhammer Ford of Owasso in the amount of $55,291. Any questions?
I, why, why do we need this truck? So, I mean, I read this all.
Yes, sir. The, the amount of times that we've found, the PD has found themselves in the need of a pickup truck, whether it be to haul items larger than what we can fit in our SUVs, also to accommodate, also what will be coming to you guys probably in the next couple of months is requests to purchase an enclosed trailer for the PD for training, also to accommodate things such as stuff, events we do for the city. We typically have to go to the DPS and borrow a truck. You know, it's not the end of the world to borrow a truck from them, but obviously, as you've seen from the trucks that have come through here on their request, it gets difficult to break them off from a job, to get a truck for us, whether it's a search warrant, whether we're hauling several items, whether it's training firearms. We no longer have a shed at the conservation club, so we must haul all of our targets. Everything has to be hauled back and forth. Myself, my sergeant, my deputy chief, we've all used our own personal pickup trucks to haul items such as this. Things have changed in, you know, in the past where these things have all been, you know, there for us. It's different now. So, the necessity of the truck has become something that's just been ongoing, and it's, it's time, so.
I, I understand that. It's 67, almost, with the light package?
Yes, sir.
$66,000-some dollars. That's a lot of money.
I do not disagree with you, sir. As a matter of fact, today, I even asked for another quote for a new patrol vehicle, just to see where they're at. And as anybody that has purchased a new vehicle within the last couple of years have seen, matter of fact, the last patrol vehicle that we purchased was $8,000 more than what the, the original price was a year prior. So, even the F-150s, there was a savings of about $3,400 between the 150 and, and the 250. The sedans are right there along with it. And even on my deal pricing, the, the big automakers have increased their prices across the board. Emergency services are really no longer even being given the benefit of putting it ahead of the line. So, all of us, whether we're wearing a uniform or not, are all in kind of the same boat of paying that price at the sticker price.
And I understand, and I empathize.
Sure.
Well, I like what you said. Do your SUVs have trailer hitches?
They do have, they do, they do have trailer hitches, but they are not rated to tow, what we need to tow. So, and, I mean, there's more that goes along with those SUVs, the crush rating factor that's factored into those, so there's, they're limited on what they can actually tow. It's definitely not the same as a Ford Explorer that maybe you or I would buy, you know, for a normal vehicle. There's other things rated into them in regards to safety of the officer. So, they can tow, you've probably seen them tow a radar trailer, they could probably tow a small boat, but they would not be able to tow an enclosed trailer.
All right. I also see that there are one, two, three, four, five different choices. Is that what I'm seeing correctly? There are five different choices?
Correct. Correct.
How long do you plan on keeping this truck?
So, the, the current vehicle, my current vehicle's a 2018. So, this, my current vehicle actually rotates down to the deputy chief. So, her vehicle now is a 2015. That vehicle rotates down to the, the school resource officer. The vehicle that she was driving prior to that's a 2010 Charger. So, this is a little different than replacing a vehicle every year. So, this vehicle will probably be with us for no less than, I'm estimating now, a 10-year time period, which would be in use by the PD for that amount of time.
And about how many miles a year do you think you'd get out of it?
That's hard to say. And that depends on where I'm going, what's going on, who's needing to use the truck. My vehicle currently has, off the top of my head, 46,000 or 47,000, actually, it's probably in here.
And, and yours is an 18?
It's an 18.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Why do you need a diesel? Why can't you go with a V8?
No, it's a gas, it's a gas.
It is gas? Well, I'm looking at this, it's a diesel.
Dan can scroll down. It should have, if you keep going, Dan, please. So everything that's highlighted is what comes standard. And the highlighted down below, right there, is the one that's actually selected. So it's, this is a gas motor. I do not need a diesel truck.
Okay.
I have my own diesel truck.
I see there are available options. They didn't go with the option.
Right. Anything that's Xed and highlighted is what has been selected for the package of the truck.
Okay. Did you look into like a transit van or not really?
No.
Because that's covered, wouldn't that be better?
I, I didn't look into it, quite frankly. Some of the things that we pick up, now we're cramming them, trying to cram them in the backs of these cars and, no. I think, in my opinion, a pickup truck is the way to go. And as a matter of fact, a lot of PDs are actually switching over to the F-one-fifty pursuit model trucks. But I'm not there yet.
Okay.
Sean, you gotta remember too, that this is, this is my ideal pricing, so.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter whether you go with a GM, a Ford, or which you go with, it's gonna be pretty much the same price.
Another question. Because this is going to be, at least for the first year, your vehicle, wouldn't it be something to look at maybe instead of passing it down, trading it in for like we do with the other trucks and getting a new truck every year?
So the problem with that, and as you've seen based upon the request tonight, if I decommission the vehicle, we have nine thousand, one hundred and some odd dollars worth of lights and labor that's installed. So that's kind of the issue, and that's why we, we just transition it down the line, so to speak, to keep the new vehicles coming in, but still get the use out of the vehicle that, you know, that we had actually purchased. If it wasn't for updating it with that almost ten thousand dollars worth of emergency equipment, I would probably say that would be the way to go.
Could we take that equipment out and reuse it into the newer truck, at least for a few years?
We can.
I realize it's gonna cost to do that.
Sure.
But, you know, we're not gonna use it for a, at least at first, for a regular patrol car.
It can never be used as a patrol car because the truck is not pursuit rated. The equipment, yes, sir, and that's what we do. We actually rotate the equipment. But with the equipment that was in the Dodge Charger, two thousand and ten.
And I get that.
It's Generation One lighting, which.
If we did that every year, it would still be fairly new equipment for a while. You know what I'm saying? So I'm just saying that maybe something we might want to consider to do.
I can take a look at it.
Well, I'm not saying you need a new truck every year. I'm just saying we get just about as much out of our vehicles as we pay for them.
Right.
And it would be, you know, it's really wise to what we're doing with a, with a garage. Maybe it might be something we want to do with this truck.
So I'm, I'm not in tune to what the garage, you know, how much they pay and how much they get in return. So without that knowledge, I, I can't really answer you. It could be possible. You know, but I guess in the same aspect, you know, getting the most use out of that vehicle for the taxpayers, I guess is what I'm looking at, but I'm more than happy to look into it.
Other comments? Questions?
I just want to point out the end note here on this, that this is still under budget for what the city budgeted on this purchase. So I think that the conversation about the price and everything like that is a bit of a moot point since we already approved this much money for the purchase of vehicles for the police department this year.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion by Barlow, supported by Nesbit, to approve the purchase of a new Ford, twenty twenty-four Ford F-two-fifty pickup truck from Longhammer Ford of Owasso in the amount of fifty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. No further comments, roll call.
Resegui?
Yes.
Stenselberd?
No.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Tassiva?
Yes. Okay, for that same vehicle, entertain a motion to approve the upfitting for the new Ford F-two-fifty pickup truck by C-Com of Kalamazoo in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seven cents.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Put by Brim, supported by McLean, to approve the upfitting, the new Ford F-two-fifty Ford truck by C-Com of Kalamazoo Incorporated in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seven cents. Comments? Roll call.
Stenselberd?
No.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Resegui?
Yes.
Tassiva?
Yes.
Okay, item F, consider approval of a contract for seven hundred tons of seasonal road salt from Detroit Salt Company for forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Do I hear motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Stenselberd or by McLean to approve the contract for seven hundred tons of seasonal road salt from Detroit Salt Company for forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Comments? Questions? Roll call.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yep.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Resegui?
Yes.
Stenselberd?
Yes.
Tassiva?
Yes. Item G, consider adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five to approve the First Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement presented. Everybody get a chance to look at this? Basically, what this is, is a little different severance package and retirement. Is that the best of your knowledge?
Um, yes, and it will auto-renew instead of just ending after two years.
Do I hear motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Support. Motion by McLean, supported by Resegui, to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five to approve the First Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement as presented. Questions?
Yeah, so could you explain to me a little bit about what deferred compensation? How does that work?
Um, it's the four fifty-seven plan that we have offered to employees through the city, but mine's contributed to through an additional compensation through you guys.
Okay. And then with the severance period, it's going from six to ten months? Is that standard for?
I would say standard's anywhere between six and twelve, but there's some that are certainly longer.
In the future, I'd like to have it brought to us more than a week ahead.
No problem. We, the reason it wasn't brought to you sooner, it's because the city attorney was reviewing it to make sure everything was up and up and going. Okay, any further comments?
I got, a severance package is if you're terminated, correct?
Um, without cause, yeah.
Without cause. We want.
With cause, we can just throw you out? Just, just ask it.
Well, you can throw me out without cause, too.
With cause. Wouldn't do that.
I said no if you don't.
No.
If, why would we want to lengthen it as a council if we, well, we're not gonna terminate with no cause, hopefully, because?
So it also, if you got a chance to review it, it ends in the event that I become employed by another community. So if within that ten month period, let's say it's seven months, eight months, whenever it is, I become employed by another community, my severance with you guys ends.
Okay.
So it's just up to ten months.
Would hope that nobody would get without cause terminated, but.
That's the hope.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Motion made by McLean, supported by Resegui, to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five and to approve the First Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement as presented. No further comments, roll call.
Bowers?
Yep.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean? Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Resegui?
Yes.
Stenselberd?
Yes.
Barlow?
Yes.
Tassiva?
Yes. Okay, staff presentations and policy discussion, we have none. City manager's report.
All right. Well, I'm very pleased to let you know that we finally reached a consent order with the Venney's property. So Travis is updating the quotes for filling in and restoring that property back to a green space, so we hope to be able to bring that to you hopefully at the next meeting and initiate work on that as quickly as we can to bring that back to a safe and future developable condition. So that's something that we've been working on for a very long time, and we're very pleased that we've taken this major step towards being able to see that area restored, especially now with the new streetscape and the new businesses that we have downtown. Seeing the area continue to thrive by fixing that big eyesore and that danger to the community is something that's really important to all of us. So we're looking forward to being able to take a step forward in, in restoring that property. I also wanted to let you know that we had another meeting with Rutland Township this afternoon regarding the potential of some sort of four twenty-five or utility agreement for extension of water and sewer service to the future Meyer site. Meyer is planning to construct a new superstore and gas station at the corner of M-thirty-seven and M-forty-three. This would result in three hundred to three hundred and fifty new jobs here in Berry County. And one of the things that Dan and I did was reach out to the chamber because they have the Placer AI software, which allows them to gather a lot of business-related information using cell phone information, that's then compiled, and you create a variety of reports with it. But one of the concerns that we had and that we had heard from members of the community was that Meyer may harm smaller local businesses or take away from downtown. So we wanted to see what kind of unmet local demand existed or what kinds of stores people are currently leaving the county to go and get their needs met that aren't met here locally. So we were able to get that information from the chamber and found that there's already a large number of visits from residents within this county who are leaving the county to go to stores such as Meyer and, and similar other establishments. And we also were able to get an unmet demand report, which shows that most of the top categories for unmet demand in our area are the kinds of categories that Meyer supports, such as general merchandise, gas stations, even grocery stores. Those are all the types of stores that people are having to leave the area for, or there's just more demand in this area than the current stores that are available can, can meet the need for. So having that evaluation was helpful in discussing and considering the potential impact that the store would have. We talked about some of the financial aspects related to this potential transaction. We were able to identify more specifically a location of the properties that would be affected by a four twenty-five agreement and discuss the financial implications to both the township and the city, as well as to the taxpayers who would be affected by it. So just sort of to summarize where we ended up with that discussion, we provided some feedback to their proposal regarding a utility extension that would be supported by a special assessment. When we talked through that a little bit more, and Dan and I expressed some concerns about the way that it was set up, they further clarified that special assessment might not be quite the right term for what they were considering. They're looking at something more like a water and sewer utility overlay district. So that's not something that I'm directly knowledgeable about. So we told them that we'd look into it more, see if it's something that could, could possibly fit or not. And while we're looking into that, they will be considering a proposal that we brought them to, if it's possible, essentially split the services that we would be providing to the urban service area. So in our previous three iterations of the district, we've provided full urban services to the district. We are trying to assist with what one of Rutland Township's representatives' primary concerns are, which is an increase in taxes for the property owners there. So one of the ideas that we floated was to reduce the total millage rate, but not offer police service. So they would still have that service through the county, it wouldn't be a service that we offer, and then we're reducing the overall millage rate. So they were going to take that back for consideration, and we're gonna consider the water and utility overlay district and, and learn more about whether or not that might be feasible, and then get back together on September sixteenth and discuss that further. So really good discussion. I, I felt that we made a lot of progress in terms of talking about our priorities and what may and may not work for our respective communities. And I look forward to digging into this further and providing you an update again after our September sixteenth meeting.
Just an accent.
I'm sorry?
Just an accent.
I don't think that would be agreeable.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said, okay, I, actually, I have three questions.
All right.
Let's start with the first one. You say at the intersection of thirty-seven and forty-three. That's out there where Patriot is. Where, what, what area?
Where the big cornfield is.
Where the big cornfield is.
Yes.
Murphy's Corner?
Northeast corner.
Yes.
Oh, where the Ferris property is.
All right, I got you. You said three hundred and three hundred and fifty jobs? How many of those, those jobs, people working at them could afford to live in over here, Lot one twenty-eight and the new place there on Broadway?
Um.
What kind of pay are they getting for three hundred and three hundred?
It's a variety, because they have anywhere from part-time to full-time jobs, so there's a range. And where they would be able to live would depend partly on their, well, on their income. But some of the places that you pointed out are income-limited or restricted properties.
Okay, because I'm all for getting more jobs, but if they can't afford to live here?
Sure, we want quality jobs.
Thank you. Also, and I don't know why I wrote this, the, I don't know who will remember this, the old Sinclair place.
Where am I at?
There's a parking lot across from Cork Street Grill, Phil's Galley, I'm sorry. What's that all about? That, that's an eyesore.
Privately owned.
Oh, is that privately owned? Gosh, it, it's so nice to have such a beautiful downtown.
Come one block off.
Yeah, the old Sinclair.
Zephyr.
Zephyr.
Zephyr. Sinclair was on the corner of Jefferson and Green.
Old timers has not gotten you.
Correct.
So that's privately owned, there's nothing the City of Hastings can do about cleaning that?
I'm not familiar with that particular site, but I'd be happy to take a look at it and see if.
It's the one right across from Phil's Galley.
Okay.
The property is originally bought to put a development in there, and they brought a concept plan to the Planning Commission a year, a couple of years ago. Marvin Helder owns it. He owns the buildings next to it. He owns the bike shop that's there, plus the building to the west of that between the bike shop and Razor's Edge. And he put nine, was it nine row houses back in there, Dan?
Five.
Five, five. See, his plan was to put row houses in here. Since he looked at doing that, he purchased property, since he's looked at doing that, he's had a stroke. So that's kind of slowed him up a little bit, and because of the economy, the way it is, and the price of doing something like that, he's kind of abandoned. Now he has property for sale. So I assume probably somebody's gonna buy, and that property is all three pieces, so
So, and it's on the market right now, and I assume probably as soon as he sells it, there'll be some developer come in and want to do something with that, but.
But I, we'd be happy to review it and ensure that it complies with our, our code.
It, it might. I, I just know that when I walked, my son and I walked the entire City of Hastings, and it looks beautiful. By the way, Hastings looks awesome, except for that one little corner. All right, thank you.
Any other questions of Sarah? Uh, is that it?
Yep, that's all I got.
Okay. Uh, also in your packet, you have Chief Boulder's monthly report. I knew I'd have any questions of Dale. I'm assuming he's gonna get up and talk about the busy weekend.
You got three minutes.
Good evening.
Hello.
So, just to recap, we have taken a look at that, that property. Last I knew it was in compliance, but I'll have Frank check it out. So, but, so we'll take a look. It probably isn't as beautiful as the downtown streetscape, is it? So, mentioning that, I just wanted to let everybody know, I'm gonna be disrupting the flow of traffic tomorrow in downtown. So, and it's my fault. It's my fault. So, we're, we're gonna shut that street down for a few minutes so we can get a picture of, of Dan and Sarah and the mayor and all the DDA, whoever's gonna show up, I guess.
Everybody's invited.
Everybody's invited. So, whoever wants to come down, I think there's a big ribbon that they're gonna cut or something. So, we're gonna shut it down for a few minutes. It won't, it won't take too long.
What time is that at?
Uh, nine forty-five, I believe, is it? Yeah, nine forty-five. So, we'll probably shut it down five minutes prior to that. And depending on what's going on and how many stories we get to tell, depending on how long, I'll keep it closed. I'm just kidding. It won't take that long. So, probably the biggest question everyone has is Summerfest, how it went. It went actually pretty well. You know, I, I was here both days and kind of bebopping around. I've seen a few of you at the Plaza and some others elsewhere. You know, it was, I think it was pretty well attended. It's definitely not Summerfest of fifteen years ago. A lot different. And what I guess, what I mean by that is, the police department used to be a lot busier that long ago on Summerfest weekends. And some of you shaking your head probably remember some of that, but, so, really, it was, it was a good weekend. You know, the 5K run, new route for that, it worked pretty well. I would anticipate that that route may stay the same next year. But again, I say may because obviously that's something that, that Corwell takes care of. But I, I actually liked the route. It was less actually road traffic or for them to be on the road, less for manpower for my department and for volunteers, and less time that people had to spend on the road, especially the fun run for the small kids. You know, we closed Railroad Street down for the fun run. And so, Railroad Street and the River Walk was used for the fun run. So, it was actually really, it was perfect for the little kids to do that one-mile fun run, pretty safe event for them. So, definitely support that for next year if that's what they wanna do. You know, no huge problems for us. DPS was, played a big part in the parade and, and the closure of our streets. And again, without working with them and, you know, it, it just wouldn't be possible. And it definitely would have been a benefit and a bonus for me to have that truck over the weekend because my car smells like traffic cones right now. But anyway, so no, it was good. Also, I just wanted to mention, I know it's in my report, but I always like to mention this when it, it comes up, is the household hazardous waste takeback. It's coming up on September seventh. Anytime we can get a little bit of extra word out there for, you know, people to bring back their household hazardous waste and/or unused medications. We do accept sharps at this event. You know, this is two events a year that we do this, that people can bring their sharps to us and we accept them. So, it's difficult for people to find places to get rid of those sharps. So, again, I like to mention that when it's approaching, and that's actually, it's definitely right on the horizon here. So, other than that, I, I did get word from one of our reserve officers today. Our longest-standing reserve officer, that's Steve Baer, twenty-three years of service with us. And he come in and talked to me today and said this was his last Summerfest. He wanted to, you know, help out the guys with this Summerfest, and he's gonna do a couple more ride-alongs with a couple of the guys, but he is going to hang up his hat. So, twenty-three years of voluntary service to the City of Hastings, you know, it's, that says a lot right there. So, I just really wanted to say thanks to Steve in, in, in this setting, and obviously, we're gonna do something for him. But it's a long time to give to the city, to come in and, well, basically work for free. But it's really not for free. They do it because they love the city and, and they love to help out. So, but, anything else? If anybody has a question, I'm more than happy to answer it for you.
So, in Steve's defense, maybe you'd hang out a couple more years if you gave him a car instead of a bicycle. I saw him all over the place on the bicycle.
Yeah, he definitely loves to ride that bicycle.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Or a truck instead of a car.
Any other questions, Dale? Any other questions? Thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
Also, in your packet, you have City Clerk Treasurer Perrin's monthly financial report. Do you have anything to add to your report?
Not this time.
Any questions, Alinda? Okay, thank you. Also, in your packet, you have Community Development Director Dan King's monthly report. Anything to add, Dan?
No, the only, only thing I'll add is the Planning Commission has canceled their September meeting. So, it was scheduled for Tuesday, the third, so that has been, that has been canceled.
Any questions of Dan? Okay, reports and communication. One item, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four draft, DDA minutes. Entertained a motion to accept, place on file.
I'll make the motion to accept and place on file.
Support. Motion by McLean, or by Resegi, to accept and place on file. Item A, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four draft, DDA minutes. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Whole same. Public comment. At this time, anybody who wishes to address the council can get up for three minutes. Okay, Mayor and Council comments. I'll go first. It's been a busy week for me. Last Saturday night, a week ago Saturday night, we had our fifty-fifth class reunion, which was about, with about a hundred and fifteen people. It was a lot of fun. Then during the week, I had meetings and football, football last Thursday night. I'm excited about that starting in this year. And then we had Summerfest, and I try to be at everything on Summerfest. Sometimes I have to split myself in half to be at more, two places. And then we also, Saturday night, we had, I saw Don there, we had our alumni banquet at Press Training Church. That, that was well-attended. Frank Cant Bell, and the reason I mention this is because he was, he was the honorary person that night, the alumnus of the year. And I think it's a, an award that he really cherished, and I think it was well-deserved. But, other than that, Bill, any comment tonight?
I have nothing tonight.
Don?
I'm happy to hear that the tiny lots are shutting up.
Looking good, too. We, we have an open house ribbon-cutting, Dan, for that?
Uh, September eighteenth at one o'clock.
In case you haven't, didn't know. Uh, any comment, Jordan?
Uh, nothing today, no.
Terry?
Nothing. Thank you.
Al?
Nothing.
Jackie?
I always have a lot to say, but no, okay.
Norman?
No.
John?
Yes, sir. I would like to say that our Summerfest again was a great success, and I would like to thank the city staff, our police department, and our DPS department for doing such a great job during Summerfest.
Okay, nothing else come for our council? Entertained a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by McLean, supported by Barlow, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Whole same. Adjourn. Thanks for coming.
Mr. Tate?
Hand up your real quick.
Has nothing to do with council business.